Okay.
He's right there, gray hair.
Okay.
Mustache.
We're talking to the general. Okay, got it, yeah. One more for quorum, but we can probably get moving. Good morning, everyone. I'm Amir Faroki, Chair of the Atlanta City Council's Transportation Committee. I want to welcome you all to the Wednesday, January 25th, 2023 convening of that committee. I'm joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Norwood to my right and Councilmember Amos to my left, who are on the committee, and we're also joined by Council President Shipman as well. We'll need one more for a quorum, but there's a few items we can attend to. The first is public comment. How many folks do we have signed up for public comment today?
Mr. Chair, we have four to sign up for public comment.
Terrific. And joined by Councilmember Overstreet, which brings us to quorum, but we'll go ahead and move through public comment and then take our first voting items of the day. Wilbur Fitzgerald is first.
Thank you. Good morning. A streetcar named Undesirable was the headline to a story in the New York Times this past Sunday. It says that billionaire investor Warren Buffett argued that a $306 million plan to build a system of streetcars to spur economic development in Omaha was too expensive, too inflexible, and Omaha residents deserve a vote on the matter. Now, a major difference between Omaha and Atlanta on the streetcar issue, the expansion issue, is that the planned streetcar extension is cutting through the heart of residential neighborhoods, specifically mine, the Old Fourth Ward, where economic development is already at a fever pitch. I think we need transportation solutions and not more expensive failed streetcars. So why not more electric buses? My research shows that each streetcar, and that money goes to California, costs about $3 million. An electric bus, about $350,000. That's about nine electric buses for one streetcar. Now, the streetcar construction in my neighborhood will be one of the most destructive events that we've ever experienced and from which it probably will never completely recover. So let's be honest here. Atlanta is a car town. Most of us took a car here today, and people will not be coaxed out of their cars nor have a magical way of rethinking personal transportation when they see a slow-moving streetcar going around in circles. For the past decade, MARTA ridership declined 60%, and streetcars won't improve ridership. And worse, in my neighborhood, it will stop the peaceful flow of traffic. It did in its tracks. Thank you.
Rachel Allred.
Hello, good morning. My name's Rachel Allred. I'm 27 years old. I'm a known rapper in the city of Atlanta. I chose rapping because of obvious reasons. I currently work and pay my bills through working at the Park and Division All-in-One Security at the airport. I take MARTA all the time. I live life all the time, so I just want to kind of redirect everyone's priorities around here. No offense. Electric trolley cart would be good. Bringing back the trolley cart. Electric trolley cart would be good. That prevents lack of having employees, bus drivers. No offense, but my favorite thing to say, which I try not to start a riot every time at the MARTA thing, I really do try not to, I try to keep my mouth shut, but it's really difficult when I think, these guys have degrees and they have masters, but they have no idea how to hire bus drivers, and now I'm sitting out here in 12-degree weather trying just to get to work. And there are a lot worse ways to say that, but I try to keep it, you know, so everyone knows what's going on. Okay, cool. So electric trolley cart, people have degrees and can't figure out how to hire bus drivers, stick to the schedule or change the app. No offense, MARTA guy, I love you to death. Rest in peace. You want to expand airport, you want to expand, but you can't perfect what you have. Prevent loopholes. Perfect what you have and try not to expand. Just perfect what you got. You know, going back to minimalism type things, going green, minimalism. You want to invest in unnecessary things like the traffic calming devices. You want to invest in stuff like this, but not the basic needs that my neighbors and stuff that we all need, right? So just the basic things that we need. But it's really nice to meet you. I really didn't want to be that aggressive right when I came up here, because I do want to be a part of City Hall stuff. I've been around, I've met Angela Davis, that type of stuff. And again, I'm a rapper because of everything that's been going on in City Hall stuff. So I didn't even plan to speak today, but I woke up this morning and I said, all right, let's knock it out today. But anyway, it's really nice to meet everyone. With all due respect, you know, just go back to perfecting, perfect what you have, you know? Don't expand when you got 2,000 cancellations last month. No offense, but you got 2,000 cancellations last month, so perfect what you have. Work on the necessary things. You don't have bus drivers. You don't even have bus drivers. I'm sitting out here in the cold. I mean, I ain't got no problem, but my guys got problems with each other, and they got God knows what. And I witness that every day. I don't feel threatened on me, but I feel for them too. You feel me? So, you know, that's where I come from. Again, I'm a rapper, you know what I mean? This is what I do, but I do want to be well-respected in this community as well, and I got minimalist ideas. I'm so glad to see you. So, thank you, my man. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Duncan.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I just found out that my comments can't, aren't going to be really appropriate for this morning. The information won't be available till probably tomorrow, so I'll reserve them for the next meeting in the Transportation Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Rao.
Good morning and thank you. I'm Matthew Rao, Chairperson of Beltline Rail Now. Today, we expect to hear more information about revenue and estimated expenses for capital projects in more MARTA and from MARTA representatives. Six years after it began, the more MARTA halfpenny sales tax has collected nearly $500 million. The more MARTA SPOLOST was approved by 71% of Atlanta voters in 2016. They voted to tax themselves to fund several projects, one of which is the Streetcar East Extension, which contains the first section of Beltline Rail. SCE reached 30% engineering this summer and is poised to move forward immediately using only local funding generated from the more MARTA sales tax. We have long known that the projects would cost more than MARTA initially projected and that we will need additional funding sources to complete more MARTA. I'm happy that we can finally have a frank and honest conversation. For the first time since voters enacted more MARTA, elected and appointed officials can see how much more money is needed on the local side as the leverage to capture record federal funding for high-capacity transit from the FTA. This realism should be a cause for reevaluation and lesson learning, but not an excuse for endless study or diminishing of the projects in more MARTA. Most observers have known for years that we need more local funding to build these projects. Former MARTA CEO Jeff Parker said so in writing in his September 27, 2018, letter to former Mayor Bottoms. And what we may learn today is just how much more the pie must grow. The longer we wait, the more expensive all of these projects get and the more difficult it is to build them. We urge council and MARTA to work diligently and urgently with Mayor Dickens and ABI to bring the start date of the Streetcar East Extension closer by assuring that the project is not federalized and to allocate the necessary monies already banked and to be set aside to start the next phase of this project. It is prudent to show progress on the more MARTA program in order to assure citizens that those they entrusted with the building of this program will do so. To Chairman Faroki, the larger council, and to MARTA, we say, let's press play. We have been on pause for too long. The transit-dependent riders in the city deserve more options. Developers should be able to build less or no parking in their projects and instead build more affordable housing, and we must begin building the city for people and not for cars by moving this project forward.
Thank you. Mona Mohammed.
Good morning. My name is Mona Mohammed. I am 27 years old, and I'm a small business owner inside of Greenbrier Mall. I've been there for almost four years now, and one thing that I can say is a benefit is being next to the busiest airport. Being next to the busiest airport, I have served customers in Washington State and also in Puerto Rico, which the business that I opened was just for the community members, and we've reached such a big span. Transportation is important because when you expand, you give opportunities to those visiting Atlanta to visit places such as Greenbrier Mall. With MARTA, the only mall that they reach is Perimeter and Lenox, and back then it used to be the, oh, and then we also have West End Mall, and then we also have the Underground, which is not really a mall anymore. But if we do the more MARTA plan and adding the superstation at Greenbrier Mall, this would be a new connectivity. A few weeks ago, MARTA was asked, what is a priority to MARTA? And the answer was projects that make sense, projects that are inspiring, and projects that are building the community. For Campbellton Road to be one of their top three projects in the more MARTA funding, I don't understand why we're not leaning towards something that will change the community, such as Light Rail, bringing something that is innovative, something that will provide jobs for people while they are building it. And it's very important to look at the overall and not just what the community looks like right now, because what you see right now, it's nothing, but you must look at it with your third eye by seeing all the commercial opportunities that there are there and different things like that. Another thing is MARTA's mission. MARTA's mission is to, I'm sorry, you guys. MARTA's mission is to advocate for and provide safe and multi-modular transit services and advance prosperity, connectivity, and equity for a more livable region. Campbellton Road is not equitable at all. It's visible. You could see that there is nothing there for the people in the community. There are seven food marts along with seven liquor stores along the Campbellton Corridor with no grocery stores. The connectivity for the future, Councilwoman Marcy Overstreet last time brought it up, that Campbellton Road connects you all the way down to Douglasville in Carroll County. I got my degree at the University of West Georgia in Carrollton, and that is an opportunity for people in the community to get a higher education somewhere that's 45 minutes away. And if we expand transportation in the future, maybe in 20 years, they could take public transportation to Carrollton, Georgia, the same way that people have the opportunity to go to Georgia Tech, in the same way that they have the opportunity to go to Emory on the Clifton Corridor. There's a lot of opportunities, and we should keep thinking about the future and not what Campbellton looks like right now. Thank you, guys, and I hope you guys have a wonderful day.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment today. Thank you, everyone, for making the time to come down to share your perspective with us. We always like to hear from members of the public and appreciate your effort at doing so. Of course, you can always email us, call us, grab us in the hallway to bend our ear as well. We're joined by Councilmember Antonio Lewis to round out the committee members in the room today. Before we move forward with the substance of today's meeting, we need to adopt the agenda, but before we do that, I'm going to propose that we move, two items I'll propose. One is to move communications before presentations, and then we have a number of folks who are here to be, have their appointments approved by this body. I don't want them to sit through a couple hours or an hour of meeting before we get to them. And the second is, under presentations, we'll hear from the Department of Aviation first. We also have MARTA here today, and I would propose to add them to the presentations part of the agenda. So if it's okay with the committee, I propose that we adopt the agenda by moving communications before presentations and adding MARTA to the list of presentations today. Second, by Overstreet.
Mr. Chair, you have to call the meeting to order first.
Oh, well, what have we been doing? Nothing we've done has counted today. The meeting is called to order, except for public comment, that counted. So motion to approve the agenda with communications before presentations and adding MARTA as a presentation after aviation. Second by Overstreet, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The agenda has been adopted.
Our next item is to approve the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Lewis, second by Overstreet, please open the vote. We've been joined by Councilmember Juan to my far right.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The minutes have been approved.
Our next item is E, which is the Transportation Committee Goals and Objectives for this calendar year. I think every member of the committee got an email from Mr. Johnson earlier. We will kind of extend the deadline for opinions and suggestions from members of the committee to include in our goals to approve in two weeks, but please send those in to Mr. Johnson or to me, and we'll add them to the list. All right, let's go ahead and move to communications.
Section I, Communications, 23C, 5009. A communication from Councilmember Antonio Lewis, appointing Ms. Sandra Williams to serve as a member of a stakeholder oversight committee. This appointment is for a term of two years.
Ms. Williams, are you here this morning? Please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to serve in this capacity.
The Deputy Political Director for the Atlanta North Georgia Labor Council, as well as the Chair of the Atlanta North Georgia Labor Council, I misstated that. I am the Deputy Political Director for the Retail Wholesale Department Store Union. My experience in working with a number of you on the council has been in the community as well as seeing over the last two years, working on programs and projects to better community and the lives of our members and those in the community. My wanting to work on this Oversight Committee has a lot to do with accountability. We know from my work with you, Mr. Faroki, and with Antonio Lewis and Ms. Overstreet, there are things and projects within our community, sustainable projects, that need input from people like myself, people that belong to the community and work hand-in-hand with stakeholders. Another, I want to give an example of some of the work that I also do. I sit on the board as a co-chair for the Atlanta Works Source Board. In that capacity, I have the opportunity to assist people with acquiring jobs and experiences in the community through labor organizations. I'm very happy to say I have a number of our labor community members with me today just to support this recommendation by Commissioner Lewis. I feel as if there are questions that I'm waiting to answer, but you're asking me to tell about myself. I'm actively engaged. Right now, we have a situation in the city of Atlanta where we have a number of people that don't have access to transportation. There was a young lady that spoke just before me about Greenbrier Mall, but I have a number of union members that live within the city of Atlanta, and transportation is one of many challenges they have in getting to work, getting their children to daycare or aftercare. That is a consistent theme with a number of our members, because as we know, in the state of Georgia, we have a lower minimum wage, $5.15, so I still have people that are struggling to even make a living wage in the city of Atlanta. So transportation is a big deal and a big part of their lives and the cost of their transportation.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Lewis, this is your nominee. Would you like to make a motion?
So move approval. But can I speak?
Yeah, please.
This appointment is directly giving the power to the people. The work that you've done in the community for so long has been needed. The work you've done in labor has been needed. We need oversight. We need people to actually make sure they're spending the money the right way, similar to the meeting we're having here today. So I appreciate you for accepting this. I appreciate you for coming down here today. And when we see your support, I see the folks that you brought with us, I don't know if anybody's like moving stuff right now in the city, because you brought all of the leadership of union here, and that shows who you are, that they would take the time out to come down here today. So I appreciate you. I love seeing you in red, because that means you got some power going on today. Congratulations. I move approval.
Motion to approve. Then I need by Lewis, second by Overstreet, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Item number three, 23C, 5010. A communication from Councilmembers Liliana Batieri, District 5, Alex Wan, District 6, Howard Shook, District 7, Mary Noah, District 8, and Matt Westmoreland, Post Two at Large, appointing Ms. Rebecca Serna to serve as a member of the Stakeholder Oversight Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years.
Ms. Serna, I saw you walk in. Please come forward, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to serve.
Good morning. My name is Rebecca Serna, and I'm the Executive Director of Propel ATL, formerly the Atlanta Bicycle Coalition. Our mission is to reclaim streets, to make them safer for people to walk, to bike, to use wheelchairs, to access transit, as well as to improve transit throughout the city. So I come before you today with a little bit of mixed feelings about this appointment. I'm always excited to serve, and I hope to serve to the best of my ability. However, I did serve on the last Oversight Committee, and that was a bit of a mixed bag, so I hope to take that experience and learn from it and apply that to this go-round and hope for better outcomes this time. I know we have a lot of folks throughout the city who've been waiting on project delivery, and so that's something that we're going to be paying very close attention to, I'm sure, on the committee. And then we're also, we were part of the effort to create the city's Department of Transportation and feel like that was a huge success story, but something that we really have to build on in order to fully celebrate and enjoy the fruits of that success, because today what we have is a department that's really overworked. We have hundreds of projects that need to be designed and project managed and built, and we have a lot of people that would love to be building those projects, but we've got kind of a jam in the pipe, and so we need to unleash the floods and build the infrastructure that the voters have funded. So that's what I would bring to this committee.
I will move to approve Mr. Juan.
You put out the bait, so I'm going to take it. Your past experience, what's the one thing that you would change from your previous board service and apply and share with other colleagues on the new board?
Thank you for asking, Councilmember Juan. Last time around, the mandate of the committee was shifted partway through the committee term. Originally, I think those of us who joined the committee did so to try to help provide oversight and accountability, and what happened midway through was we became more of a communications arm, and communications is essential to community engagement. That's something we spend a lot of time and energy on and have worked with many of you on, many of you in the room, so that's important. I don't want to downgrade that importance. However, the Oversight Committee needs to be focused primarily on oversight and accountability.
I appreciate that observation. I think that's a great watchword for all the appointees and for us as well, so hopefully we'll all take that to heat. So I'll second the motion.
Motion by Faroki, second by Juan. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Mr. Chair, we will reserve item number four for last, and we will continue on to item number five.
Please do.
Item number five, 23C, 5012. A communication from Councilmembers Mary Noah, District 8, Liliana Batieri, District 5, Alex Wan, District 6, Howard Shook, District 7, and Matt Westmoreland, Post Two at Large, appointing Mr. Dr. Michael Bell to serve as a member of Stakeholder Oversight Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years.
Dr. Bell, are you with us today? Please come forward. Be sure for us your background and why you're interested in this appointment.
Good morning, and thank you very much for having me here. I am a public finance professional. I'm retired now completely, but for 25 years in metro Atlanta, I've held a CFO's position. I've been the CFO of Atlanta, I've been the CFO of DeKalb County, I've been the CFO of the DeKalb School District. I'm published and have taught graduate and undergraduate courses in public finance. And when Maynard asked me to be the CFO in Maynard III, when he came back for the third term, I came back and there was a credit rating issue for the city of Atlanta, it was pretty substantial, and it dealt with the structure of an advance for funding that he was being advised to go forward and do, which had a major flaw in it, okay? I told Maynard, I'm telling you, we're going to have a conference call with Moody's. If you hear, then bring this up, we need to stop this, and he did, okay? So in my career, I've had to advise my bosses of things they didn't necessarily want to hear, and most of the time, I'm correct, okay? So Mary asked me to take a look at this Stakeholder Committee. One of the things we all have difficulty with is bringing public works, projects in on time and on budget, okay? And so, and I've been involved in billions of dollars of that type of thing, so I'm very much interested in being part of the Stakeholder Committee.
Ms. Norwood.
Move to approve, and Dr. Bell has been a resident for many years in District 8. He now has moved to District 7, so he represents our part of the city, and I'm delighted to nominate him. So move to approve.
Question to approve by Norwood, second by Juan. Please open the vote on the nomination.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Thank you.
Item number six, 23C, 5013. A communication from Councilmembers Mary Noah, District 8, Liliana Batieri, District 5, Alex Wan, District 6, Howard Shook, District 7, and Matt Westmoreland, Post Two at Large, appointing Mr. JP Mazikite to serve as a member of the Stakeholder Oversight Committee. The appointee was unable to attend due to a schedule conflict, so the motion will be to hold.
Motion to hold by Juan, second by Faroki. We will welcome Mr. Mazikite at a future date. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. This item is held in committee. Item number seven, 23C, 5014. A communication from Councilmembers Mary Noah, District 8, Liliana Batieri, District 5, Alex Wan, District 6, Howard Shook, District 7, and Matt Westmoreland, Post Two at Large, appointing Mr. Brinkley Dickerson to serve as a member of the Stakeholder Oversight Committee.
Hey, Mr. Dickerson, welcome to the podium. Please tell us a little bit about your background and why you like to serve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am from Atlanta. I attended Woodward. I spent eight years at Emory, earned my MBA in law degree as well there. I am a senior partner at Trauma Pepper. I have chaired NPUA for the last 10 years, and for the 10 years prior to that was vice chair. And in our part of town, we live with traffic. I did spend a period of time in Northern Exile, practicing law right after law school in Chicago, and I was a dedicated strap hanger, so I appreciate the intricacies, complexities, and importance of our mass transit system and the role that it can play, and hope that I can provide a good view on everything that is considered.
Ms. Norwood.
Yes, I make the motion to approve, and Mr. Dickerson has been outstanding representing NPUA and dealing with very complicated issues out there, so I think he will bring a great citywide perspective to this group.
Motion to approve by Norwood, second by Faroki. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. This takes us to item number four, 23C, 5011. A communication from Councilmembers Mary Noah, District 8, Liliana Batieri, District item number four, 23C, 5011. A communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. Solomon Cavaness the Fourth to serve as Commissioner of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for the city of Atlanta.
Mr. Cavaness, please come forward. I think most of us have had a chance to speak with you and meet with you, but please tell us a little bit about your background and why you'd like to be our next Commissioner of the Atlanta Department of Transportation.
Good morning, councilmembers. Kujioata, Deputy Chief Operating Officer of the Mayor's Office. So about six months ago, we came before this body to talk about our plans for the next Commissioner for ATL DOT. And during that time, we've been doing a national search, and we've had conversations with all of you, and you've known how that's been going. And over the last, I think, three weeks now, Mr. Cavaness has joined us, and we've kind of, we've socialized him with almost all of you. But before we present him, I would like to mention that, remind you how we came here and presented Ms. Marsha Bomar as the interim. This will be her last Transportation Committee meeting, but I want to say a big thank you. She has been phenomenal, phenomenal. The leadership that she provided when she took over, the department was going through a change at that time, and needed someone that not only understood transportation, but also knew how to be a leader and raise people and lead people. And want to say thank you, Ms. Marsha. And if you can, can we give her a standing ovation, if you can, please? If you're able, just give her a standing ovation. She has been absolutely phenomenal. The kind of leadership that she has provided is just exemplary. She has mentored people here. She has been a pleasure to work with. This is not the last time we're seeing her, but, you know, just to say thank you for your service. Thank you so much. And so Mr. Cavaness is joining us from New Jersey, and you know his experience. He's done this. He's been here. He's done this kind of work, and we're confident that he's going to lead the department to the next level. And I present to you, Mr. Cavaness.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. The moment's here. I don't know how to follow that act, given the interim commissioner and all the work we've done together. But a huge thank you for her leadership and guidance. I have spoken to most of the council members on this committee, looking forward to future sit downs with others. I will say that this is a milestone moment in my life to return to the place I call home that's raised me, to be a part of the growth and continuing the path of a world-class city. I look forward to using my experience and what I've learned in my career, 21-year career, in another region in exile, as the gentleman mentioned, further north. But I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I see it as an honor, a pleasure, and look forward to bringing that experience to deliver what I know is possible with all the great folks behind me, so.
First, I think I'd speak on behalf of everyone up here. Thank you to Commissioner Anderson Bomar. You've done a remarkable job and I think exceeded everyone's expectations, and we're grateful for your time and service with us. You're always welcome to come back to committee and share your perspective. But thank you again for your service. Mr. Cavaness, I know, I believe you've probably met with everyone here, maybe, and if not, you will soon. Not to put you on the spot too much, but I wonder if you could maybe share some of what you think our priorities are, given our conversations, or where we see need for urgency or action as you likely assume this post.
And I wouldn't see that as being put on the spot, considering our conversations and the value that those conversations have brought for all the residents to the city of Atlanta. But I will say that equity, health, a common platform across the city for voices to be heard, participation. But I think more than anything, we've recognized the opportunity for me to be an advocate on behalf of the committee and also on behalf of the City of Atlanta Department of Transportation, you representing our work and helping us, guide us in the right directions. Some of the appointments today and future appointments really show the progress and where we're headed. I will say, our conversations have, you know, gotten, we've gone down the path of bike, ped, safety, of course, delivery of capital programs, capital projects. We are structuring the department to make sure that we can follow through, making sure that the communication between the Transportation Committee and the department is in lockstep, and we have frequent, if not regular, conversations about status. But making sure that there's a cohesion between what the mayor's priorities and the committee's priorities are.
Thank you. I will move to approve. Is there a second? A second from Overstreet. Please open the vote. Sorry, Mr. Wan.
The vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Mr. Wan.
Mr. Chair and Mr. Cavaness, abstaining only because we haven't had our meeting yet, and it's my practice not to actually vote up or down until we actually have had that conversation, although we've had a different one. But I like what I hear and see so far, so I look forward to that in-depth dive. Thanks.
You can thank Mr. Wan's abstention for the fact that now we'll have to debate this at full council, so we'll see you at full council. Look forward to it. Mr. Lewis.
I didn't think I was following up in abstention. I thought I was following up to say congratulations and welcome home. As a person who's had to travel for work, I understand what it's like to come home, and I understand that you got to have a love for the city to get back, cherish it. I want you to know you're in a position to grow. In that position right there, we ain't never seen a black man in a row. And so you are an example to a lot of people who want to come back to Atlanta, and I can't wait to see what you do. But I still hold, reserve the right to criticize you as we move forward. I still hold, reserve that right. Thank you.
And may I respond? Please. Yeah, I see a cadence happening here, and I look forward to that criticism because it only helps us grow. My experience in the Northeast has helped me grow in that way and understand how constructive those exchanges are. So you mentioned that I'm African-American male in this role. I represent a family where I have a Mexican-American wife, two young girls, and thinking about diversity and the direction that this country's going and the excitement in Atlanta and the interest in moving here. My wife couldn't be more excited to be a part of this future of the city. So I want to represent this committee in that way.
Thank you. We will take up this item again at full council. I would encourage you to meet with Mr. Wan beforehand, though, procedural note, he's not allowed to abstain at full council, so you could force him to vote without meeting with him, but I would encourage you to meet with him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that takes us to Section G, Presentations, Reports, and Updates.
Excellent. Our first report today will be the Department of, excuse me, Department of Aviation. Mr. Beodari, welcome to the podium.
There's a reason why I like Councilmember Lewis. He doesn't hold back. Good morning, President Shipman.
If I may, Mr. Beodari, just a friendly reminder, for anyone giving a presentation, my preference is 15 minutes or less, and then we can get into Q and A with the committee.
I was planning on two hours, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, President Shipman, Chairman Faruki, Councilmember, BB Beodari, Aviation General Manager. It's a pleasure to be here to close out calendar year 2022 with my fourth quarter presentation. Could you guys check the slides, please, on the screen?
Doesn't fit the screen. The airport's ambitions are matched with the screen resolution.
So before I start the presentation, I want to acknowledge some of my team members that are here, three of my deputy general manager, Jan Lennon, Brian Bennerfield, Michael Smith, and the director of Public Affairs, Andy Gobiel. And also on behalf of the 840 team members and all of our stakeholders at the airport, what I'm about to show is a combined effort of one team delivering this excellent, not only to our community, but also to our region and globally. The output of Atlanta Airport performance is very reflective on our vision and mission. Our vision of airport efficiency and exceptional customer service connect, and our mission is to connect our communities to the world. Do you want me to hold on for a second there, Mr. Chair, or proceed?
Do you know how long it'll take to get the presentation up on the screen?
[inaudible]
Please continue.
So our strategic plan sits reside in three strategic pillar that have people, purpose, and performance. Let's talk a little bit about people first. The total authorized strength in the Department of Aviation is 840. Currently, we have 187 vacancies. In the fourth quarter, we lost 24 employees, but we gained 41 new hires. Over the entire year, we have lost a total of 105 employees, gained 168, which is a plus 64. So we're making headways. But my challenge is my peer airport are cannibalizing from Atlanta because our employees are so good. Just last week, I lost another employee to another airport out in the East Coast. And the dominant reason for losing these employees, number one is they have excellent skill set in the industry, but number two is the compensation package that they're being offered in other places. I just can't compete with that. So I had a discussion with the administration, and they're looking at the entire compensation package so that we could retain our skilled employees here. Under our people pillar, the other thing that I'm very focused on is training for the employee to make sure that we hone their skill set. Last year, we completed over 1,000 hour of training. Most important is conflict resolution and emotional intelligence training. Receive such large accolade from the employees that I'm bringing those training back this year for the employees, especially the emotional intelligence training. Spent a lot of time in the community, very reflective again of our strategy. Last year, you could see in December, one of the very, thing I'm very proud of is the ribbon cutting and the opening of those five new gates at that Concourse T North. Spent lots of, lots of, lots of topic and discussion is ongoing in the community. Next week, we'll be hosting human trafficking again this year with the governor and the mayor being in attendance. Let's talk a little bit about operation activities. We, the total number you're seeing here for the, for the year, fourth quarter, 25 million, but for the year, 94.3. I think we will drop a little bit to 93.3 because of all the issue that happened over the holiday weekends. We're still waiting for a couple of more airline to submit their data to us. But I think we'll finish the year at 93.3 million passengers, 179 flight operations for the month, for the last quarter, over 700,000 flight operations and over 600,000 metric tons. But importantly, I wanted to look at the bottom of this slide, 13 new international destination out of Atlanta.
I feel like there's a couple missing. Did I just see the Ethiopian Airlines to Addis Ababa and Delta to Nice? They're not on this list.
That's this quarter.
Ah, okay.
Now, I'll talk a little bit about that. We got Nice, we got Dusseldorf, we got Stuttgart, we have Tel Aviv and Ethiopia, starting this quarter. Attention here in the number of guns for the calendar year, 448 compared to 507 last year. Our public service endeavor, I think, is resonating somewhat, but not to the point where we would like it to be. The federal agencies are paying close attention to this here. If you look at 911 calls, we do handle a lot of 911 calls out in the airport, and more importantly, 277 million total for the year, social media impression at the airport. So just to give you a quick snapshot, year over year, 2019 being our busiest year on record compared to what happened in 2020, 21, and 22 in passenger, flight operations, and cargo. See, we dropped from 110 million to 42, and now we're back up to 94 million for calendar year 2022. This year, we're expected to exceed 100 million passenger based on current forecast, all things being equal. Receive a lot of accolades from outside agency, which lends validation to our performance. A couple of things that I want to highlight here, maintaining our, regaining our status as the world busiest airport and number one in customer service by size and region. Revenue for the quarter, September, July through September, because our finances based on fiscal year, we're doing really well in our concession, sales, and rental car. And as a result of that, we see that we are doing better than what our budgeted revenue was for that quarter. Expenses, we're doing really well because we still have, we still have some outstanding contracts that we have to pay, and the number of vacancies is contributing to that large variance in our operational expenses. This is just our capital program. We will finish the year approving construction invoice of $618 million. Overall, our, our participation rate for the fiscal, for the calendar year is at right around 28%. We had a very low quarter last quarter in terms of our participation because of the type of work we were doing last quarter that reduced the eligibility of participation. Last quarter, we opened up at least five projects valued at $628 million. As I highlighted earlier, T North Five Gate Extension, Fire Station 32, the Nine Left and the Wrong Taxiway, et cetera, those are some major project, again, $628 million in completed projects in calendar year 2022. And here's a quick snapshot summary of our overall diversity program from 2015 to 2022, $745 million total paid to minority, female, and small businesses at the airport. So the economic opportunities for female and minority businesses at the airport is second to none in the industry. We're the leader in this area. So what's on top for us in the coming, in this coming quarter and the coming year? We have a number of ongoing project, the tunnel extension. If you walk into the domestic terminal, you will see a lot of construction activities going on out there. Baggage claim, we will be, we're replacing the North baggage claim system, the ceiling in the domestic terminal, we're, we're replacing, we're continuing the T Center Point escalator, elevator expansion to give us more capacity. But more importantly, we are also modernizing our main security checkpoint, bringing it to the same standard as the south security checkpoint with the latest of technology. And finally, this year, this body, I'll be coming to this body, either myself or one of my team members, will be coming to this body just in our capital program, looking at 38 projects we're getting ready to start this year. Some of it is already started, but we will be coming for additional funding to support those projects. So a lot of activities is going on this year, putting a lot of strain on the employee, need to fill those vacancies to get everyone on board so we could continue to deliver with a sense of urgency and efficiency. With that, I want to thank this body and looking forward to your continued support in calendar year 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Beodari. It's always good to have you here and for the thoroughness of your report. One question, I'll turn to my colleague, the C-Customer Wan in the queue. Underneath your presentation, can you talk a little bit about the relocation of the cell phone lot, how you're seeing usage as compared to the previous location, or are we just seeing people kind of circle, circle the loop as they wait for their pickups?
So the previous location of the cell So the previous location of a cell phone lot, as you know, created a security risk for us. And a few years prior to that is we had people throwing stuff over the security fence and stuff and got us into a lot of trouble. So when we did the evaluation, we want to tighten up our security posture, number one, and I need the space for additional support space for all this construction that is coming on. So we did look and we did determine that we have a location that will serve and the the previous location only was more effective for serving the south side of the airport. The current location is effective in serving both north and south terminals. We're getting good use it. The other over the holiday, I was there at the, I think, eleven P M. At night, and the lot was full with people. We still have some issue, though, where where people who are not acceptable of the new cell phone lot and tend to park now, not so much circling, but will pull out the side of the road and park. And and we're putting a lot of focus on keeping them moving and education is another focus of ours on the new lot.
Thank you, Mr. Juan.
Thank you, General Manager. I've got just two questions. The first one has to do with the people, the attrition. Any trends that we should be aware of as to why folks are leaving? Are they leaving for money? Are they leaving for to industry, private industry, or are they just retiring?
No, the dominant trend for us that they're resigning and moving on is moving to aviation, to this they stay in the industry, but moving to other airport. And what we are seeing is a compensation, right, for us here. However, with filling our vacancy, I am not seeing the trend of others or potential candidate coming from other airport or our industry. And the reason for that is because of our compensation package. What I'm seeing is they're coming from the private sector, come to the airport, we train them, we get them really, really good to understand the industry, and then there's this migration. So it's a we're keeping focus in it and and it's the nature of the business that we're doing because by virtue of who we are in the industry and our standing, I'll give you a quick example. Yesterday, I had a call with one of my colleague in another airport just south of us here, and she was, we're having a robust discussion about my organization structure, how we are so successful. She just hired a few months ago one of my excellent executive team member. And I asked her, I said, are you ready to send him back to us? And she said, never. And she said, thank you for the the training you guys perform and and the product that you're delivering to us. So it's a testament to what we're doing here. We we send the best of the they're taking the best of the best away from us.
I do think, I mean, I appreciate you bringing that up. I mean, it is something we should be mindful of. I mean, we don't kind of the practice ground, and then we lose the a brain drain because of any particular reason in terms of compensation opportunity. So I know y'all are looking at that. I know that, you know, we're while we are being very successful in terms of new hires, got to make sure that we're able to, we're doing everything that we should do to retain them. And if it's compensation, then let's let's talk about that in the budget and the.
So, yes, so they the mayor and the H R commissioner, chief operating officer, everybody's very focused on this, and we got a number of initiative underway.
I appreciate, I know, I know you've got your eye on that. The second question has to do with some of the data. I'm surprised to see that cargo numbers dipping. Is there a reason for that? I would have thought that they should be going in the other direction now that we're kind of coming out pandemic, hopefully, supply chain issues are stopped.
So regular freight and farmer and stuff, you know, is stabilized. The P P E number has dropped to some degree because there is less demand for that. But as factories are starting to open up back, we are starting to see an increase in freight in manufacturer type cargo coming into the airport and leaving the airport.
Is there anything we can do to make sure that we are? I mean, I'm assuming we are competitive or we're kind of the only game in town really for Georgia, but is there anything else, any levers we have on that? It's too important that with the Atlanta airport's role in distribution in the southeast that we maintain that number and keep advancing it as much as possible.
So I have a solid plan in place because we're at capacity. And what you all will be helping me with is phase two of modern air cargo development that we are embarking on. We've got a lot of enabling work going on that R F P have been awarded. So now we're going to come back for the development of an additional capacity at the airport.
As usual, you're on top of everything. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Mr. Lewis.
And my questions are around the capital projects that were completed last year. You said six hundred twenty-five, six, six hundred twenty-eight point five million dollars worth of capital projects were completed in one year, one year timeframe?
No, no, those are multi, those were projects that were open, were completed. So those some of those projects were multi-year projects. Last year, the total project that we completed just last year in terms of contract invoice was six hundred and fifteen million dollars. If you look at that one slide where we talk about each quarter.
I appreciate you. I like seeing shoulders in the ground, and the only time I don't like seeing shoulders because we just completed the project. Keep growing. I appreciate you for completing these projects.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Shipman.
Thank you. Just a quick question, and it's one that I'm going to ask across a number of different agencies. If you look at page five, you note that at the end of December, you had one hundred and eighty-seven vacancies. So according to total authorizations, about twenty-eight point six percent of total positions are vacant. If you then flip back to page fourteen, at least for July through September of twenty-two, which is an earlier period, you were thirty-four percent under expenses, and the footnote notes that in part it was driven by personnel. My question is, should should counsel expect that that you will have a budget surplus or not a surplus, but basically that expenses will continue to run under budget because of personnel? Or do you have a plan to reallocate those expenses that were supposed to be personnel? Because at this point, I don't think you're going to hire one hundred and eighty-seven, you know, overnight. And so you've got you've got those those unspent expenses on the budget. I'm wondering how you're thinking about those.
So those, the budget is for a full and F T. For the entire year, we we don't prorate the the budget. And the reason for that is because according to federal regulation, I have to maintain X number, I have to. And as long as I have a plan in place, and we have a very robust plan, we're thinking in the next month or two, we're probably going to onboard roughly thirty or forty new employee into the airport. My problem, my challenges is the unknown of of the resignation that is occurring because some of the employee, especially the skilled labor, they will jump ship for a dollar or two into another company. And so that's, that's where our challenge, not so much this, the of the the professional level employees we're having, it's more at the skill level employees that we're having.
So let me follow up again with my question. From a budget perspective, can we expect that at the end of the year, there will be a, in essence, a positive variance because expenses will be below because basically, I understand the challenge of the labor market. You haven't been able to fill those positions. Should we expect there to be a positive variance financially? Or should we expect that you will have reallocated what was intended to be personnel expenses to some other expense line?
No, we will not reallocate the personal expense to to another cost center. You will, you one could expect that we will have a positive variance in terms of the labor cost that is budgeted.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beadare. We appreciate your time and your report. I know you have to leave for a flight, but you have team members here to to lead us through some of the legislative items we'll deal with later today. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council member.
Our next presentation will be from from MARTA. As many folks are probably aware, there was a report a week or so ago about a significant shortfall that would affect the ability of the agency to deliver a number of capital projects in the city and Clayton County as well, though we're obviously primarily concerned with City of Atlanta. I asked CEO Greenwood to join us today. He's agreed to do so. So the floor is yours, Mr. Greenwood. We look forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Chair Farukh, and good morning, everyone. It's Colley Greenwood, CEO of MARTA, and I have with me Kerry Rocha, the interim chief capital officer. Really, you know, we have quarterly briefings scheduled and our our next scheduled appearance here from MARTA is March first. So we will be coming back with a full presentation on a number of matters, including this one. But consistent with what Chair Farukh has said, we got a call last week asking us to just, you know, show up here today and and address any concerns that the council may have about transparency or anything that you've been reading or hearing about. So, you know, with that, I would like to open the floor to back to the chair and to your questions so we can get right into your your interests.
Sure, so I'll start. I know there'll be plenty of commenting questions from my colleagues. The report in the A J C a week or two ago suggested there's a one billion dollar shortfall in revenues needed to complete a number of express capital projects. Is that true?
It's true that the A J C said that. It's also true that the A J C was basing that on some social media posts that, you know, they had come across. But what I will say in answering that is, you know, the more MARTA Atlanta Capital Program was born in a funding gap. For those of you that remember in twenty sixteen, we had something in the neighborhood of seventy candidate projects with a total cost of about twelve billion dollars and a projected sales tax income of two point seven billion. So right out of the gate, we're talking about a nine and change billion dollar funding gap. A lot of work was done, has been done since twenty sixteen, working with City of Atlanta, working with communities and really, you know, narrowing that list of seventy projects down to about seventeen projects, still with about four billion dollars in requirement on a two point seven billion dollar tax revenue. So we've been in a funding gap since inception. The fact is, we're narrowing that. That is not a surprise to anyone in this room or anyone at MARTA that's been, you know, following this program. I I would also say that what we did, starting in the fall of last year, was we said, look, we're, we're working with the program governance committee, project governance committee, the City of Atlanta folks. We're identifying what our priority projects are. We're making sure that we identify, I think we're down to about seven key priority projects. And what we need, because the the inflationary landscape that we're operating in is such that prices and costs continue to change, we could continue to model on an as-needed basis, or we could invest time and money into a modeling tool that is mature enough to be nimble with the changing conditions. So that's what we've done. We've, you know, spoken of this in previous council meetings. And and so MARTA has employed H D R, a world renowned leader in this space. H D R is, you know, they've been around a hundred and six years. They they operate in thirteen different countries. It's a collection of economists and analysts and engineers and builders. And what they're doing is building a model that allows MARTA to to change the inputs as the conditions change, to change the model and see what happens if we resequence, if costs go up, if we get federal funding, if the if the if the state funding model changes, we're then able to be more technical in our analysis of where these projects are. The key here is that that modeling exercise is not complete. The model is not finished. We expect by the end of the quarter, the model will be in a position that we can bring all those inputs together, come to you with something that's concrete and and transparent.
So to fully, full context, you have, we've had a discussion in this committee before about inflationary pressures and rising costs that have affected the ability to deliver projects.
Yeah.
I think what was left on the table after those earlier conversations was, when are we going to have these very real conversations as to which projects can go forward, which ones may need to be scaled back or eliminated? And what are you, MARTA, others doing to try and close funding gaps or increase the the pie, as it were? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so it's true that we've said that we're, you know, we're going to have to come back together and kind of decide what our key priority projects are. It's true that we've been working with the P G C, members of the the mayor's cabinet. And it's also true that we're very close to having a list of seven projects tiered into two different tiers, if you will, and then the balance of the projects in a third tier in terms of those that are, for argument's sake, below the line, are projects that we can't really responsibly invest a lot of time and money in right now because we're not sure where the funds are coming from down the road. So so I would say we are, you know, on the ninety-ninth yard line in terms of completing that that activity with the P the P G C. And as soon as that's completed, we'll bring that to you. We have been back and forth with those members in terms of what we thought was a completed product and then some concerns that they had about a couple of projects on the on the list. So we're giving that that process the time it takes to communicate. In terms of funding and where the funds are coming from, that is a, you know, in transit, that's, that's the world we live in. We continue to put together the list of the of the aspirational projects that we want to have, and then we set about building and finding funds to do that. So whether it's federal funds, whether it's grants, whether it's, you know, formula fund increases through the federal government or state, state funding that we've been lobbying for and successful in achieving. I will say that last year, we were, we successfully achieved about a hundred million dollars in funds between federal and state agency partners. So that's the work that has to happen each year to make sure that the wheels keep moving.
Yeah, I think, and I see some colleagues in the queue, and I want to turn to them quickly. I have a couple more questions. And, you know, I think what heightens anxiety amongst council members and members of the public is the sense that when these reports come out or when the reality, whether it's inflationary cost or otherwise, force these hard conversations, public trust and council trust erodes in the agency. And you can say that's right or wrong, but that's, that's what we're grappling with because all of us have residents who, whether they voted for the more MARTA tax or not, expect projects to be delivered as a result of that tax being collected. And it's, it becomes tougher to to ask the public to support future transit taxes down the road if if projects aren't being delivered. And that's kind, we feel like we've been in this holding pattern for quite a long time, waiting for projects to come to reality. And the the conversation around reprioritization and dealing with the financial realities seems to kind of be lagging, given the hunger for some clarity as to what we're going to be able to do with with the funding streams that exist today. And so I, you know, I think the the part that really gets me is the the waning trust that something's going to get done in a timely manner.
Okay.
And what that means for the future of multimodal transit in our city.
Great, let me address that, if you would, please. If I, if I was to, let me start by saying that the constituents that you're concerned about are also our customers. We are gravely concerned about our customers. That's why we do what we do. We're not in this landscape to talk about projects and plan projects and not deliver them. So it's, it's very much front and center in terms of what MARTA wants to do. So we're partnered there. I would encourage you and anyone that that senses that their their trust is waning to have faith, I want to tell you that it's, I'm not asking you to just blindly trust me, but I want to put it in context. We're dealing with major capital transit projects here. These take time. There's a lot of heavy federal interest in the projects that we're taking on. And, you know, from project development perspectives alone, it's about two years in project development for planning and 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 that kind of development work. So these things do take time. And like I said, let me go back. So twenty sixteen, this, you know, is is when we started with the referendum. By twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, we narrowed the list. By twenty twenty is when the I G A actually passed. So the I G A passed on seventeen projects in twenty twenty. So I hope the audio is clear. It's cutting in and out with me, okay? So you can start the clock ticking in terms of, you know, where is it essentially in twenty twenty? And to give you some some insight into what we've been doing since twenty twenty, this is January of twenty twenty-three, and we've got substantial movement on six or seven key projects. So we've got Summer Hill, Campbellton, Bankhead, Cleveland Metropolitan, Five Points, Streetcar East, all in varying stages of progress, including Summer Hill that is actually under construction right now with the watershed work and all the 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 properties acquisitions that we've been taking on. So, you know, these projects have a stated end date in terms of when we're going to go live, and we're not slipping on those. We're going to be very transparent at our quarterly briefings about the progress made. We have our P G C committee that we continually communicate with. And, yeah, I'm not saying that it's not going to have its challenges. Anytime you build a major transit project, you can expect that. So, you know, there's all kinds of, you never know what you're going to find subterraneously. You never, you never know what kind of, you know, locations you're going to have to deal with, infrastructure issues, relocations, water table, soil conditions, pandemics, labor and and supply chain issues. All of the, all of those things are real, but they're taken into account, and we continue to communicate. So it's just, these aren't simple projects that you can expect to be done, you know, in a couple in a couple of years. These are complex projects, and they are on target.
So, my last question, I'll turn to Councilor Overstreet, is, it's my understanding that the intergovernmental agreement, the IGA, requires MARTA to provide a financial report to the city every quarter.
Correct.
Has that been occurring?
I'll, I can tell you this. Our quarterly update, we have a draft version of one, but by the end of next week, we'll be able to give you the most up-to-date quarterly briefing. In terms of the cadence of what you've received in the past, I believe, and Carrie can speak to this, that you've been given, or the City of Atlanta has been given, the financial information. I don't know if I can really call it, say that it's been the format of the formal draft report. But the report that I've seen is comprehensive, and you should be getting that, you know, within the next couple of weeks.
So, my interpretation of the answer, that is no, but we're going to try harder.
No, I, my interpretation is that the information has been available and forthcoming, not in the format that I've seen, and we're going to continue to improve. But let me, before we close on that, I'll ask Carrie Rocha to explain further.
Good morning, Carrie Rocha. Excuse me. Interim Chief Capital Officer. We have provided quarterly financial reports to the city. We've been providing those to the PMT. And actually, when we came November 30th, you had our September quarterly report was within that program that we presented.
Okay.
So, sorry. And we do have the one through December that will be provided to our PMT during Tuesday's meeting.
I've heard otherwise. I'll, you know, talk to the administration and see if that's true, but I appreciate your response to that. And I think the question, and that, the question is pointed at what feels like the city being caught off guard as to the budget shortfalls that may exist, and the financial pressures that may exist. And I know you shared this document with us, would have liked to have received it yesterday so we have time to digest it, and maybe you'll speak to it. It's capital expenditures by MARTA fiscal year quarter through September 30th of 2022. So, it's still missing the fourth quarter of 2022. Is this the type of report that's being provided to the city on a quarterly basis?
Absolutely. So, this is the exact same thing that you all saw on November 30th. The city has come back on numerous occasions and said, "Can you format it this way or that way?" This is a format that they requested. So, it's the same information, just broken down by quarter with the tally of each fiscal year.
Okay. Councilor Overstreet.
GM Greenwood, thank you very much for adding us to your calendar today, because we do know this was not a scheduled time for you to be here for this committee, so thanks for coming. So, I'll just piggyback on a few things, because I will say that Councilmember Farokh did have several of my questions. I'll actually start where you guys left off, with this particular report here. We did see this already. When we asked for something to come before committee, we wanted to be the most current piece that you have. And with the expenditures, especially the Moore Marta expenditures, we know that you have access to the most current data. And so, we, as a committee, expect for that to be before us, and not something from September, when we're in January.
I, let me just clarify. Ms. Rocha submitted and spoke of that in answer to the question, "Have we been submitting information?" So, I think that settles that. And what I said to you, and Ms. Rocha said, "Next week, we will have the most up-to-date available to you." So, it's the cadence and the timing of this. You know, we were going to be coming to you on March 1st, in which case, we would have had the most up-to-date. But as you said, you know, we're happy to clear our calendar and show up, but the reports aren't always keeping that same cadence.
So, for March 1st, and I wrote this down, for March 1st, we would want to make sure that we had even February's numbers included, because they're available. You have access to all of this data, all of the time.
Yeah, so, I cannot produce those reports until the fiscal month is closed.
So, okay, so you're saying it'll be through January 31st?
Correct.
What, you're bringing March the 1st?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, that's still better than September, so that'll be fine, if that's fine with you, Chair.
Yes.
Okay. But, in general, let's just talk about how you said that, you know, really, we should all just accept the fact that no real conversations or no real work could have been done before 2020 with the Moore Marta dollars. I can't agree with that. Because 2016 is when it was passed, like we all agree on, but 2020 is not the first time that we would expect there to be progress, like real progress that's noticeable. That, I don't agree with that.
I'll try again. I mean, I don't want to just leave it that we're in disagreement. Let me start by saying, I think the comments are born of anticipation and desire to get things done.
Yes.
And I want to circle back and say, "I respect that, honor that, and share that." And then I'm going to say to you, "We're doing our level best to meet those expectations." We are more expectant than you are that these projects are done. We need to get these shovels in the ground and get these projects moving, because it's part of our overall plan to expand the system, generate excitement for the system, and generate funds from our funding partners to keep doing more. So, we're with you on that. My comment about 2020 was, the IGA wasn't passed until 2020. So, I think we have to agree that we can't just go barreling through, assuming that funds are going to be there and support's going to be there until that IGA is formed. I think a lot of the projects that I mentioned, there was some work done before the IGA, you know, was officially passed. But in terms of substantive work, we have to be very careful, though we don't put the cart before the horse. Imagine the scenario, if you will, had we gone forward on some of the other 17 projects that are now approved, only to find that we're not in agreement that we should be doing those, and we want to prioritize differently. We have to be responsible as MARTA to make sure that we're putting that work in after the IGA. So, if you start the clock at the IGA, I would stand here.
I wouldn't.
Okay, all right.
That's what I'm telling you. I would not.
So, that's a disagreement point.
That would imply that the city and MARTA both have ownership in a three-year lag of actual substantial work done, from '17, '18, well, that's almost four years. And so, I don't agree with that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Also, I know that last year, February, when I put in that accountability legislation, it was my desire for us to narrow down the projects. And I am glad to hear that we are close, but time and time again, you all have said, "By the end of the year, the website would be up and going," or "We would have a better idea of a prioritization and a rebaselining," because we've talked about holding hands, even, and how long it has been since we've been on the same page as far as what projects will actually get done. And we talked about prioritization. And we were told last year this time, because that was close around this time, when I didn't particularly care for the presentation for the Campbellton Road project. I think it was February, actually. But I would like to say that if we don't get this prioritization done, and when I say "we," I am in it with you, because I'm representing the City of Atlanta's residents, who painfully are looking for us to have a substantial transportation grid change, and that has not occurred. So, I am in it with you. And if we do not do what, I even talked about how, as a city, we had to rebaseline and prioritize, prioritize.
Reprioritize.
Reprioritize.
We'll get it.
The, our renewed T-Splas projects. You know, we talked about all of this.
Yeah.
And when you don't have the amount of money available, the funding available, to complete all of the projects, you have to make that horrible decision
That's right.
Of letting the public know that we can only take care of these projects, and these projects will not get done in this cycle. And we've not done that. And we're still there, and it's not going to change the, nothing is going to change until we do that.
I couldn't agree more, Councilmember. And again, I will say, we're close. MARTA had submitted what we believe is the final list, then further conversations took place. It's a multi-agency PGC panel. And, you know, I've got to give deference to the other voices in the room that have concerns about what projects we believe should be first, and second, and third. And, you know, it would be inappropriate for me to say, "We're ready," because as a team, we're not. And I like the way you phrased it. It's a joint effort, and I think we're saying the same thing. We're in this together, and we have to get that list out. We, I believe we have a meeting next week or the following week, and it is my hope that at that meeting, that list gets, you know, finalized. But there are other voices in the room that we have to listen to.
Once that meeting is finalized, I mean, once that list is agreed upon, there should be heavy media and outreach to the community
Absolutely.
To explain why, and then dig in.
Right on.
You're going to have to own it.
Yeah. We own it.
Okay.
We own it.
Yeah, because it's not going to be
And we own it.
Okay. So, for March the 1st, when you come, because I'm just going to leave everything for now, but for March the 1st, when you come, I definitely have a few things that I'd like for you to bring. Because of the social media post and your comment about the social media post, you know, MARTA's press release and everything, we have been getting a ridiculous amount of questions concerning the state of MARTA. And I would like for you to bring details that show that funding between the different jurisdictions are not commingled. That's important. I would like this particular fiscal quarter update, all the way to January 31st, like we spoke about, because that type of summary is extremely important. And I would like to know that priority list.
Noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I turn to Councilor Wong, I will note, Councilor Overstreet, you know, called out the T-Splas prioritization that we went through three, four years ago. And I, you know, what was a painful process was made much less so, I think, by the previous administration and the folks they had on it, being very forthcoming and having a lot of open, honest conversations about it, that I think folks, both in this building and outside this building, realized hard decisions had to be made, and we'd made those together. And I would encourage MARTA to do the same as quickly as possible.
Yeah, just a comment on that. That is the approach that we want to take. We are, MARTA is aching to share the list and say, "This is what we're doing, and let's go." But again, it is an inter-agency operation, and we are being mindful of the other voices in the room. So, you know, I take your point. I agree with it, and I don't want anyone to think that we disagree on that.
Mr. Wong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. GM Greenwood, just two questions and then a comment. First question has to, as you mentioned, the HDK report, or the
HDR, yeah.
Okay. That is, you're saying y'all are still refining it, working with them to massage the assumptions, and it should be done
This quarter.
Second quarter?
Mm-hmm.
This quarter? In advance of March 1, or not in advance of March?
Let me say, not in advance of March 1, and if it comes earlier, it'll be a surprise.
I would, in my mind, the way I would assume that report, it would have the projects kind of what original budget might have been, the new projected budget, funding sources and shortfalls. Is that part of the analysis, or no?
So, let me reiterate. This is a tool that they're finalizing. When the tool is finished, that will enable us to do reports based on various inputs. So, it's not a report that we're waiting on.
Gotcha.
It's completion of a tool.
Okay, so we get the tool in second quarter of this year, and then y'all start doing your sensitivity analysis. And that's before we, I mean, that's really the engine that drives a lot of the conversation, the questions that are being asked up here, right? So, we're still six months out.
No, well, the idea behind the tool is that it's with us for the next 40 years of landscape changes, and so that's the beauty of waiting, you know, since past fall to have it developed. But I would expect that early on, when we have that tool, and we know the inputs that we're using and the assumptions, that we'll be able to generate a report to say, "Based on the information we have at this time, these are the financials."
All right. All right, I'll just express my anxiety about that, that here we are, a shot has been fired by some information put out in the public in terms of gaps, and now we're going to fly in the dark for a bit before we get your team's assessment, which I value, but it's just this time gap. Information creates itself in a vacuum that may or may not be beneficial to the ultimate objective.
So, thank you for that. I think the anxiety is properly placed with a shot in the dark. I believe that until a tool is actually ready, with the results readied and finalized, I think it's irresponsible for any of us to take a shot in the dark.
I don't disagree with this. I guess I'm just a little surprised of the timeline of the lag there, because, yeah, I mean, in this environment, time is our enemy, both inflation, project costs, funding, opportunity.
And let me say, Councilmember Wong, that since inception of that HDR tool, we said it would be around this time that it was ready. So, it's, again, it's about timing.
All right, well, I'm very anxious for that. The second question, under the capital expenditures, the line item Moore Marta program that has nearly $9 million expended, what's included in that?
Sorry, what's included in the $9 million?
Yep.
Carrie, would you like to take the details?
I mean, everything else is attributed to a specific project or initiative. That one is kind of a general bucket, so.
Yeah, so, within that line, there are a number of activities, and you can see that that's the line where the earliest activities occurred, and much more heavily towards the beginning of the program. As Mr. Greenwood has described, this program started in 2016. In 2017, the public engagement campaign began, and we had to narrow that list from the 70 or so projects. There was a heavy public engagement campaign going out and presenting those projects in order for them to be selected. So, that's part of that really early process, but much heavily in public engagement. There was also the standing up of a program management office for the planning side. So, we had meetings with, or we formed committees, stakeholder advisory committees, technical advisory committees, and the JPLG, which was the Joint Program Leadership Group, I believe. And all of those meetings that were regularly held, as Colleen indicated, this wasn't our first financial model that we've done. There was a lot of modeling that was done at that time to figure out the sequence of the projects, what the estimated, you know, costs of the projects were. And then they ran a model back then on what the projected revenues were. So, all of that work is represented in that bucket.
That's helpful. You know, and those are my two questions. My observation here is, and I said this in your last presentation as well, I mean, you know, here we are looking at nearly $50 million. There's all this angst now about underfunding of projects, potentially, or funding gaps, I would say, that we need to, you know, go look at the obvious sources for. But in the meantime, except for Summer Hill, that nothing is really, you know, there's been those shovels in the ground. So, this is the environment that we're all working in. This is the constituents that you have and we have are asking about. And I just, I encourage you, I mean, you know, a different angle on what folks have been saying is that the best way to counteract surprises, you know, random shots fired, I hate using that pun, but, or that idiom, is to just rip the Band-Aid off and be very transparent. Give us all the information so that there isn't, and don't have these time vacuum gaps so that, you know, it's just easier to preempt the questions versus having to answer ones that may or may not be founded because they're being created in a vacuum. So, again, observation, I'll give you a chance to respond, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Wong. You know, the transit project landscape is such that things change all the time. And I think we want to measure, or be measured, in how we communicate on these projects. I think if it was an open, daily, you know, kind of, you know, ongoing dialogue to say, "Well, the number is here." "No, it's here." "No, we've learned this." "No, we've learned that." I want to be able to, when we come to you with a report, be able to say, this is complete, and this is void of anything that we hadn't thought of. And it's not impossible that, you know, the unknown is going to crop up, but to have a regular cadence, something that we've agreed on as a group and a PGC structure, I, you know, I frankly think that that's the most responsible way to communicate on these projects. I agree that, you know, random shots in the dark will happen, and, you know, we could shoot from the hip in response to that. But I believe that we have an obligation to keep it professional and...
I agree. I just do think that we can't wait for perfect.
I agree.
Because if we do, the downside of that wait is not worth the incremental gain that you get from going, getting from pretty good to perfect.
Right, yeah, I agree.
I feel like that's the space that we're in right now.
All right. But it won't be perfect.
Right, it never will be, because everything's changing. But the longer we wait, the worse it's going to be.
Right.
I've been, one last thing, it's just, we are, have been, and I said this last time, I think we have tried to be very good vocal advocates and spokespeople and cheerleaders in the public. When things like this happen, it's not like other jurisdictions that are thinking about MARTA aren't watching this. And so, we have to be mindful of that as well, is that the best way we can convince them is by doing it right this first time. So, just keep, you know...
Absolutely.
We're on the same team. We're trying to get to the same point. But I think, I'd rather see us err on the side of more information with a caveat than no information or too little information and all these rumors and other stories coming up to fill the vacuum.
Yeah, and I thank you for that. And I believe that anyone that's listening, if they understand the historical travel of this portfolio, they'll see that, you know, we started off in a $9.3 billion funding gap, and we are now talking about a potential $1 billion funding gap, and that is potential, that is not confirmed. So, you know, anyone that's following the ball will see that this is, this is in fact a good news story.
Thank you, Councilmember Wong. Before I turn to Councilmember Lewis, occurred to me, has there ever been an audit of the more MARTA program standalone? Obviously, MARTA is an institution, has an audit, I assume on an annual basis, but has there been an audit of the more MARTA program to date? Third-party formal independent audit?
There has never been a third-party formal independent audit. Under MARTA's audit group, we do several different types of audits, including, you know, reviewing processes, procedures, who's signing off on things. And there's been a number of those. They'll review soft costs, a number of those different types of reviews, but they really spread the breadth of the agency in the capital program.
You know, I ask in part because I think part of the, in addition to the shifting sands that exist in the world and the price pressures that Councilmember Wong, I think, captured really nicely, this is kind of where we are in kind of acting in that moving framework. Having the public confidence that the funds are being used and allocated in furtherance of those projects verified by a third party, I think, would go a long way. This body can't mandate y'all to have an audit of that, but it may be the conversation we have with MARTA board members, et cetera. But I would encourage y'all to look into that. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. A lot of the questions I was going to ask, they've already been asked, and the other things I want to ask, I can't ask because of the information we have, it's old information. And we're talking about September 2022, and that's a long time ago. And Josh Rogan was there at that time period, so I'm just trying to, we need some more update, update things. My, the things I do want to talk about is T-Spots. What we did here in Atlanta for T-Spots, we taxed ourselves. And when we taxed ourselves, we wanted red houses, we wanted exactly what we wanted, right? A lot of that stuff actually changed. Other cities, we're going to have to go back to the people and talk to them again. I'm looking at what happened in Chatham County just November this year, in which they voted down T-Spots. It lost by 1,400 votes. This is us trusting you, trusting MARTA, and taxing ourselves. And I'm just thinking about so many other things we could have done with that money, in my opinion, things we could have done with that money. So, the rumors that are coming out after, out of MARTA are loud enough to make us want to ask you to come down here. So, I appreciate you for coming. The, the one thing I do want to, some more things I do want to talk about are, because you didn't give me, I didn't get the information I thought I was going to have when you came. As we look forward, I want to look at work sessions to look at finances, construction, and the schedule. I want to look at how much is local money, how much is federal money on each product, project? What's the local preferred alternative on each project? What was the first alternative on each project? And what's the project price now, where we start? Lastly, also, Councilmember Overstreet and myself, we asked you about the gondola and about receiving a report, and have you received it?
Can I respond?
Yeah.
Yeah. The gondola is, let me say this. There's concern about the amount of money that's been spent on more MARTA Atlanta so far. I think it's about $47 million, largely in project development, planning. Ms. Rocha explained, every time we go out to public communications and all of that, it increases the costs, and we pay into that. You know, we did spend some time looking at off-wire battery vehicle technology. We came back with a report on that. When it comes to the gondolas, we heard you at the last meeting. And so, we also heard other concerns that, you know, do we really want to be spending more of that money that we're talking about here on another form of transportation, on another potential LPA? So, I would, you know, we are looking at gondolas internally in terms of what's it about, how might it apply? But to get a form, before we get a formal study done and more planning and project development, I would ask if it is the will of council together that we spend that money going forward on gondolas. If that's the case, then we'll spend the money. But I suspect that it should be enough for us to come back to you when we're ready, when we have the information about what our first blush on gondolas is. Does that, does that meet well with your expectations?
No, I've been asking since last year in July, when we were in DC together. You said you don't recall it, but that's when I found out about it.
Yeah, I don't.
And I know, and you had people there with you that say that I've talked about it.
So...
And we requested it.
Sorry.
And we'll say that in the last meeting, we requested it, and you said you would get it to us. We've already spent $47 million, and we're not putting shovels in the ground. I want to see this. And that's why I requested it, and so did Councilmember Overstreet. We've been requesting it for a while, so we want to see it.
What I said, first of all, you know, if you're going on record saying that you're talking about gondolas in DC, I'm going to tell you, you weren't. You were talking to me about rail. You said, we want rail, and that's, you were clear on that. Gondolas did not show up. Gondolas showed up for me the first time at our last meeting, and we, I said we will look at it, but in the time that's passed since the last meeting, I haven't come back with a formal response. And I want to know today if council agrees that we should spend money on a formal review of gondolas as a locally preferred alternative option.
So, I think we may be having a communication issue. Rail and gondola, I was saying, give me some more things, and I definitely said the word because I didn't know how to see it. And so, there are other people around that have even come back to you, but that's neither nor. I want it. I want it, and I appreciate you, Chair. I appreciate you.
Councilmember Overstreet.
Yeah, since my name was mentioned a couple times, I'd like to weigh in. So, my preference is for us to, and I've said this, is to explore all options for what is best in every corridor. And that's what we've been speaking about. So, I can't say that I know the name, because I'm not the transportation expert here. I can't say that I know the name of all of the options that you should be exploring, but I know for sure that I've been requesting that all options that we see throughout the modeling, throughout the states or globally, wherever, I've asked for everything to be explored and not just two modes, BRT or LRT. I have asked for that. Can we agree on that?
I can agree that you have asked.
Yes, I have.
Yes, you have. I can also agree that I have not committed to bringing back a formal report on all modes. I have to tell you, that's immensely expensive. So, if, you know, let me hear from council that that's what we want to do, and then we'll take that back. But if, just let me finish, but if you're aware of what that'll do to the costs before shovels hit the ground, you know, on the one hand, I hear you saying, we've already spent $47 million, put the shovels in. On the other hand, right now, I'm hearing you saying, stop, take more time, investigate more options, spend more money. So, I'm having a bit of, you know, an issue trying to make sure that we're doing the right thing by all of the council. Go ahead, Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Lewis.
So, I was saying, from then, before I even knew, before this report came out, that you may have, that MARTA may have spent up to $100 million without putting shovels in the ground. Before that came out, I asked about this. And so, as a council member, I've been asking about it. I'm standing for it. And I'm okay with us, we've already spent $47 million without putting, from what I heard today, for three years, we knew we weren't going to put shovels in the ground. That was before I got here.
And if you remember, I said shovels are in the ground.
Yeah.
Right, shovel, we are moving substantively on several projects, including Summer Hill, where construction has already started. So, that's incorrect.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Shippman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Greenwood, for coming today outside of the normal course. I have a few questions on different topics, just to try to help the public and also in my own mind to get a few things clear. First, I do want to revisit something that the chair noted. I believe it was at the last quarterly presentation, you weren't here, but your staff was. I believe, and Chair Faroki, correct me if I'm wrong, that the chair had asked if the council could receive the quarterly updates that had been given to the city. And the answer was yes, we'd be happy to provide those. I don't believe that those have been received, and so I would re-up that request. Is that correct, Chair Faroki? That's correct. So, simply that, per the IGA, you're correct, that those are to be provided to the mayor's office. We were asking to see that trail of reports over time.
So, yeah, those are being prepared. If I was not here, then I have to say, it probably wasn't a quarterly briefing, it might have been some special request.
It was out of me that it was requested, so I appreciate that. So, just back to the PGC, so the Project Governance Committee, PGC, correct, which is part of the IGA, that is made up substantially of representatives of MARTA, the City of Atlanta, and the Beltline, is that correct?
Correct.
Are there any other parties that are part of the PGC at the moment?
Outside of those three?
Correct.
No.
Okay. So, when you speak to the other voices in the room, it's really the city and the Beltline as well as MARTA, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And when you talk about the project list of the seven and going to the PGC, my reading of the IGA is that the PGC is the body that would make the decision on the priority list or and/or would make any changes to the list. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, basically, the process here is that, as I understand it, and as you've outlined it today, you're working on a very substantial financial model, trying to understand where we are with these various projects. You believe there'll be seven in two buckets, highest priority of some subset of seven, second priority, and then a group of other projects in a third tier to say, we think that those are really beyond the scope of the immediate effort and spend that we should have. You'll present that to the PGC formally. The PGC basically will agree or disagree or send it back for more, whatever, but that the PGC, not council, would be the ones that would approve that project list, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then that that would trigger, as far as the IGA, Section 5.0, which basically says there's a formal communications mechanism by which changes would be made. Would those changes need to be ratified by the MARTA board?
They would be brought to the MARTA board, and we would present them for the MARTA board for authorization and approval, so that's a matter of course for us.
Right, because in essence, they have to, the board has to authorize you to execute a certain list.
On my behalf.
So, I just want to be clear for the public and for council. The council actually does not have a formal role in this process. This prioritization list can change without council weighing in at all. So, my question is, how does council and the community have any input on the work that's being done around that prioritization list, which seems to be where all of the attention is right now?
So, what, do you want to take that, or, let me start by saying, you know, the members, City of Atlanta members on the PGC are peers of yourselves and council and City of Atlanta. So, when they're, I, just as I will be reporting back out to MARTA when we're in a position to move forward with a sign-off, I would anticipate that your peers on the City of Atlanta would do the same internally with you.
I just want to add, too, within these meetings, we've had a number of, so the meetings we've had with the city have not necessarily been formal PGC meetings, right? Because as we're talking about the prioritization, we do want to include other voices. ARC has been at the table, as well as the ATL. There's a number of folks that have history with how this program was put together, so it's really important to have those folks at the table. To me, your voice is through the representatives that we have there in the room, and I think we all have the responsibility of socializing and making sure that we're connecting and bringing those ideas and thoughts and input back to the table.
Okay. Of the seven projects on the list, you've talked about Summer Hill, which I'm assuming is one of the seven, actually having dirt moving and things actually already occurring on Summer Hill. So, I would assume that Summer Hill has to remain on the seven, because why would you stop a project? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but of the other major projects that have often come up to this committee, which include Clifton Corridor, Campbellton Road, and Beltline Rail Extension, are any of those at a point of no return? In essence, we have signed contracts that are binding or that there is work that's substantially being done in which you would say, look, your expectation really should be that Summer Hill plus these are absolutely on the list because we're so far along on them.
Well, I would say Campbellton is in that, in that ballpark. You know, the CIG has been approved, the LPA has been selected, we're moving forward with that. I think, you know, Cleveland Metropolitan is on track substantively. I think Bankhead is designed at 30%, and the TOD work is already on the street. I would say, in terms of, is it impossible to put the brakes on any of those? It's not impossible, but in terms of sunk...
It's always possible to cold-stop something.
Sure.
Do you understand the spirit of the question?
In terms of, yes, in terms of sunk costs, I would say that that tops my list in terms of the things that are at the point of no return.
I want to follow up specifically on the Beltline Rail, the East Side Streetcar Extension on the Beltline. Is that in fact at 30%, and has it been approved by the PMT formally?
It is in this design phase. There's been no formal approval as yet. Carrie, can you add to that?
Yes, so that project in particular is going to be on our agenda for Tuesday with the PMT.
Got it.
So, from the PMT, it'll go to PGC.
So, and just so, again, so I'm clear, it has to have a PMT approval, and then it has to have a PGC approval in order to move to the next round of RFPs and RFQs to continue design? Is that correct?
That is not correct. So, we can move forward with putting an RFP on the street prior to that approval. We don't get the official locked-in 30% cost and schedule commitment per the IGA without the PGC approving it.
Got it. Thank you. No, that's helpful.
Yeah, you will see that at the MARTA committee meetings on Thursday, tomorrow, we are requesting permission to start putting that RFP out for Streetcar East as well as Bankhead.
At the MARTA meet, at the MARTA meetings? At the PMT tomorrow?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, because we have to go to the MARTA board for that approval to put the RFPs on the street.
So, speaking of clause 5.0, which I referenced before, which is in the IGA, the formal mechanism by which changes are made to the programs, have there been formal changes to the program since 2020, when the IGA was adopted?
So, the only formal change that has been made was for the Summer Hill project. So, we had locked in at the 30% cost and schedule. We did have changes to that, and we followed that process, letter to the mayor, briefing of our Atlanta board members, briefing to the full board, and that did go through PMT and PGC.
So, in essence, from a formal IGA perspective, the IGA was adopted in 2020 with a certain set of projects that were anticipated. The only official change to that list or expectations that would trigger 5.0 has been Summer Hill, is that correct?
That is correct right now, but obviously, we're contemplating with the discussions on the projects, additional changes.
Right. Switching topics briefly, I pulled up on the City of Atlanta website, under the mayor's office, if you search on T-Spots and MARTA referendum, going back to 2016, there's a page that exists. And on that page, it says to, the question that was answered, asked earlier, state, this is a quote, "State law also requires that the city public..." Oh, sorry, that's not the right button. It says, "State law requires an annual audit of each transportation purpose listed in the..." listed in the referendum resolution. This audit will track original cost estimates, current cost estimates, current year expenditures, and prior year expenditures." Are you aware of that requirement? Or can you square that phrase with what was asked about the formal audit?
No. Would you repeat that for me, just see if any of that rings familiar?
Sure. Again, it's on the City of Atlanta's website. It's under the mayor's office, projects and initiatives, specifically T-Splast and MARTA referendum, referencing 2016. And it says that, under reporting and transparency, maintaining the public's confidence is important to the City of Atlanta. State law requires an annual audit of each transportation purpose listed in the referendum resolution. This audit will track original cost estimates, current cost estimates, current year expenditures, and prior year expenditures.
OK. No, I'm not familiar with that as it applies to MARTA, except to say that MARTA does report on those very deliverables, on those very components or measures that you mentioned. So original cost, up-to-date costs, amount spent to date, all of that's readily available.
But an annual audit is, I think, a question mark here of a fulfillment of an annual audit.
I can't speak to what we've done internally since 2016, but I can reiterate what Ms. Rocha has said, which is we've not had an external, third-party audit done on that program. Again, we're talking about something where we've spent $47 million, but that is, it's on a $2.7 billion projected input source. So it's, we're very clear in terms of where that $47 million has gone. So it would be a very quick audit. So internally, that's not a lift, but, you know, we can speak to the fact and go back and check if that applies to external third-party. And Chair Faroki has already asked that question.
Yeah, and Chair Faroki, I would just sort of underline that. And this may be somewhere where law needs to be involved for what is the jurisdictional law regarding these kinds of audits and the definition, because clearly it doesn't say external audit. It says audit. We'll have to see what that means. But I think the point's well taken. I want to ask a different, quick series of questions. And it's, again, building on some things that Councilmember Juan talked about. You have provided a report which shows a very clear segregation of spend by project. Do you account in a segregated fashion per jurisdiction? So do you, in essence, segregate funds specific to Atlanta, Moore-Marta, Clayton, et cetera?
So the budgets for those programs are all managed separately. We essentially have three buckets of budgets that we manage. Our state of good repair and local funding bucket, our Clayton County expansion program, and the Moore-Marta Atlanta program. And all of those are tracked separately. In terms of, you know, segregation of funds, I can't speak exactly whether they're in a bank account with different pieces. We would need Mr. Raj Srinoff to answer that question. I think we have answered that here before, but my apologies, I can't recall. But those funds are completely tracked, completely separately. And we know what is in each account, or, you know, I'll air quote "account" right now. What is in each bucket at a particular time.
Right. So I, so, thank you. I would encourage you at the March report to bring the reports that showcase the specificity of especially the Atlanta bucket. I think, obviously, there's been a lot of conjecture as to whether or not things have been kept separate. I think just restoring confidence in folks that those have been. I also had just one other point that I think should be brought up. And that is, you know, I think we also have to understand the context of the streetcar situation as it resides. There was a lot of unhappiness from council members, understandably, that we were not given any heads up when the streetcar was stopped in its form of being on the rails. Obviously, that is not a timely thing to happen, to have to stop the service of the streetcar when we're talking about expansion of new projects. And so I also, for March, I don't want to put you on the spot today because that was not the request, but I think for March, it's important that we get a pretty clear update on what's happening with the streetcar vehicles. And also specifically, if this situation with the streetcar vehicles should give us any pause about the East Side expansion and if there's any relationship between the two. That's something that a lot of folks have asked me about, especially on the East Side. Hey, is there anything to learn from what's happening right now? So again, I don't want to, you don't have to go into that.
I don't mind responding.
That's completely your call.
Yeah. And, you know, if you'd like further details, by all means, we'll bring that, you know, with charts and graphs and whatnot. But yes, the decision to stop running streetcar vehicles on the streetcar alignment, when we made that decision, was the right decision. There's, I don't think there's anyone that can reasonably disagree with that in the interest of safety. We don't want an at-speed derailment in the City of Atlanta. The issues leading up to that decision were spoken about and brought in front of our board in terms of what we need, in terms of wheel-truing machines and equipment that frankly never came with the streetcar when MARTA adopted it in 2018 from the City of Atlanta. The dollies didn't fit, things like that, that, you know, really, in terms of taking over a robust streetcar network, that would have been and should have been in place. So we started the process. The board approved and, you know, the procurements were in motion. But at the last time we inspected the track alignment, we said, listen, we know that administratively, these wheels are in motion, but physically, these wheels are at risk. And we're not going to wait. We're going to just stop the process. There are four vehicles. Let's pull them off. We have more than enough capacity in our L vans. We'll wrap the L vans. We'll do a communications campaign. We'll continue with service for the people that are waiting for service. We gave, you know, I believe our chief operating officer, George Wright, came to a meeting here and gave you an update in terms of when we expect those vehicles to come back. I'm happy to report that, you know, as he said, we would continue to find new ways to expedite that timeframe. So, you know, Streetcar 1 is out in Sacramento right now, you know, being worked on. Streetcar 2, we actually have a line on some assistance in Salt Lake City that Streetcar 2 may actually be back before Streetcar 1. So instead of, I don't, I think we may have said June in our earlier reports, we're anticipating March to get the first streetcar back in service. So, you know, good news on that front. And to your point about people wondering if this is an indication, I think, frankly, I think people should understand that when MARTA takes over a mode and decides to operate it safely for the city, the residents of the City of Atlanta, that's what we're going to do. And we will sometimes make the unpopular decision to stop in the interest of safety. If anyone takes anything from this conversation, it should be that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your indulgence. I'd just make one comment, specifically because the PGC is so important here. I would encourage the Transportation Committee to have a representative from the City of Atlanta that can speak to the City of Atlanta's perspective on PGC matters whenever we have MARTA reporting. I think the next few reports from MARTA are going to be a lot about the project list. And given the fact that that is how the IGA operates, that it really is the mayor's office, it's the representatives of the city, to have them here almost as a way for us to ask them questions, because we're asking a lot of questions of our MARTA friends. But to some extent, Mr. Greenwood is right. The council's real input here should best be coordinated through the City of Atlanta so that we have, and we have a good relationship with our friends across the hall. But if we don't have them in the meeting and we don't have them as part of the conversation, it sort of misses a step. So just a note.
Thank you, President Shipman. Councilmember Overstreet.
Thank you. And I actually had my speaker button on for a minute to just reiterate just that. I've known since last year this time that we were, when we were going through, everything that we were going through with the Campbellton Road conversation, that the IGA really is not with the city council. It's with the mayor's office, with the executive branch, and MARTA. So our true voices will, can only be heard through the executive branch. And for that reason, that's why I've been communicating with the executive branch mostly about that. So just want to make sure everyone is on that same page.
Thank you. Mr. Greenwood, thank you for your time. And I appreciate, I know these questions are pressing and the time is tough. The anxiousness and frustration we feel is genuine. But I appreciate you responding quickly to the request to be here and for being here today. And we look forward to seeing you on March 1st. Quickly, on the streetcar piece, you'll be reporting on, obviously, the state of repair. But I asked this last time. I think one thing that would be helpful is also understanding how ridership with the buses that are on the route has decreased, stayed the same, or increased when you report to us on March 1st. You don't have to get into it now. Just, I think it would be helpful to have some of that on March 1st.
We'll do. We'll prepare that.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. Now we get to the legislative part of this legislative body. Mr. Johnson, can we start with, we have a public hearing. So I will move item H 2201887 to open the public hearing. Take it a second. Second by Overstreet. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. The public hearing is open. Mr. Chair, I have no one who signed up for public hearing. May I read the caption?
Please do.
Item number 1, 2201897. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor's designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to abandon portions of a public street known as Stewart Avenue consisting of approximately 0.125 acres lying and being a landlot, 108 of the 14th District of Fulton County, Georgia being more specifically described in the attached Exhibit A to Candy Coated Entertainment Incorporated authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute a quick claim D2 for such abandoned right-of-way and for other purposes.
Mr. Smith. The floor is yours.
Good morning, councilmembers. Alan Smith, interim deputy commissioner, ATL DOT, TIM Division. This legislation will allow Candy Coated Entertainment Incorporated to abandon the street, Stewart Avenue, in order to stop trash dumping, illegal parking, loitering, and other illegal activity. Also, the abandonment will secure and clean the area, and it will no longer be a liability to the City of Atlanta.
I will move to approve. Second by Overstreet. Please open the vote.
Mr. Chair, we have to vote to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing by Juan. Second by Faroki. Please open the vote on the motion to close the public hearing before we vote on the matter.
The vote is open.
Yeah, Stewart Avenue, you're throwing it back to the 90s. Are we talking about Metropolitan Parkway?
No, 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 no.
OK, yeah.
Yeah, no, this is a little bit, this is a little dead-end street. We're not abandoning Metropolitan Parkway.
But my question, I think my question was because it's right, so it's our Whitehall.
That portion.
So it's metro, so we still have some areas on Metropolitan, they still be named Stewart Avenue, correct?
Yes.
That's what I was asking. I was just making.
I was about to lace him up and meet you at Run and Shoot on Stewart Avenue. I used to get hoop. I'm too old now.
The vote is open.
Thank you. I think the public hearing is, did we voted? Votes open, huh?
The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The public hearing is closed.
I will move to approve 2201897. Second by Juan. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. Items favorable. This takes us to Section K, ordinance for first reading. Consent agenda, Section K, ordinance for first reading. Item number 6, 2301066. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to amend ordinance 2201227, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on April 18, 2022, and approved by the operation of law on April 27, 2022 for the purpose of adding additional parcels listed in Exhibit A thereto and for other purposes. This takes us to our regular agenda. Section M, ordinance for second reading. Item number 9, 2301044. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to accept grant funding from the Atlanta Regional Commission and Georgia Department of Transportation to amend the fiscal year 2023 intergovernmental grant fund budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations for a preliminary engineering and scoping study for the intersection of Moreland Avenue and DeKalb Avenue in the amount of $240,000.00 to enter into agreements with the Atlanta Regional Commission and Georgia Department of Transportation to allocate funds for the local match of $60,000.00 from the Atlanta Department of Transportation budget and for other purposes.
Mr. Nagy.
Good morning, almost good afternoon to all y'all. My name is Douglas Nagy. I'm deputy commissioner for strategy and planning in ATL DOT. This is an ARC grant that will help us study what we call the jug handles at DeKalb and Moreland, that kind of weird down ramp and up ramp there. It's quite tricky for drivers, but it's almost impossible for pedestrians and cyclists and scooter riders. So we, this will help us scope out, you know, what's a potential solution for that in partnership with GDOT, because anything that happens there would require, you know, connection with Moreland, which is a state route.
Excited to see this. It's, looks like a remnant of the 1950s in some ways. I will move to approve. Second by Juan. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. Items favorable. Mr. Chair, the department requests to take items 10 and 11 together.
Please do.
Item number 10, 2301045. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the fiscal year 2023 intergovernmental grant fund budget by adding to appropriations the 2021 LAMIG grant amount of $4,32,979.50 on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation and for other purposes. Item number 11, 2301046. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the fiscal year 2023 intergovernmental grant fund budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations the 2022 LAMIG grant amount of $4,477,269.76 on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation and for other purposes.
Mr. Abbasoud.
Good morning. Ibrahim Abbasoud. I'm the interim deputy commissioner for Atlanta DOT Capital Projects. I guess the only additional I want to add is the words of anticipation and appropriation, which means to me, in simple language, we do have the check from GDOT. We're going to put it in the grant account for the local maintenance and improvement grant. And we're ready to spend it on already listed the projects.
Mr. Juan.
So we're just now getting the 2021 grant money? Isn't that a lot later than normal?
This list is being decided during COVID time. So basically, this is an additional to the grant money that we have for 2023. In other words, we, what we do, we submit the, yeah, we submit the application. We get the project list from GDOT approved. And then, right now, is we're getting around to getting the work done.
I understand that. Were you going to add some context?
Can you add something? Good morning, Marsha Anderson-Bomar, Commissioner Emeritus, Atlanta DOT.
Not yet. We don't have a new commissioner yet.
Has been, has been. There you go. So there was a period of time when the city did not put forward its matching money to, this is a year and a half, two years ago. There was a decision made. Nobody here is privy to what that, what created that decision. But a decision was made to not put forward the matching dollars to get the GDOT funds. So that's why we're actually bringing two years together to play catch-up, to get all these projects funded and going. And the intent is to do two years' worth in the next paving season, in this calendar year.
So this is additional money, as he, as y'all suggested. So have the projects already been determined for this extra money that we're receiving because of the match?
The projects, the projects are decided. There is a small window of opportunity to make some corrections, dollar for dollar. So we can't substitute, you know, a small segment for an entire road. But dollar for dollar, there is some opportunity to make some changes.
Approved an LMIG paving contract last fall, late fall, early, you know, what?
Recently, yeah. That was, that was the contract for the contractor who actually delivers the paving work. So we teed that agreement up so that when all these funds were put in place and ready to go and the paving season begins, asphalt plants open, et cetera, weather cooperates, that they can start delivering the projects.
So that contract we approved already contemplates these funds as well as the current year funds? year funds. Okay, thank you. I'll move approval on both items.
I'll second. Motion to approve by Juan, second by Faroki. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, items are favorable. Item number 12, 2301047, in ordinance by Transportation Committee to amend the FY 2023 Airport Renewal and Extension Fund, Airport Passenger Facility Charge Fund, 2019A Non-AMT Garbs, 2019C PFC Non-AMT Bond Fund, 2019D PFC AMT Bond Fund, 2022A Non-AMT Garbs, 2022B AMT Garbs, 2022C PFC Non-AMT Bond Fund, and 2022D PFC AMT Bond Fund budgets by transferring to and from appropriations, a total amount of $56,105,921.0 for reimbursement of the Airport Renewal and Extension Fund, and 2022B AMT Garbs and for other purposes.
Mr. Smith.
Good morning, Michael Smith, Deputy General Manager, Department of Aviation. This paper will allow us to reimburse interim funding choices. We use our renewal and extension fund to fund various construction projects, and now we're able to move the garb fund, which are the bond funds, to replace those.
Motion to approve by Juan, second by Faroki. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, items favorable. Item number 13, 2301048, in ordinance by Transportation Committee amending the fiscal year 2023 Airport Renewal and Extension Fund budget by transferring to and from appropriations in the amount of $60,171,217.0 to provide funding for various projects at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport and for other purposes.
Mr. Smith.
Now that we've reimbursed our RNE fund, we're able to take these RNE funds to fund additional capital projects. So this will amend our capital fund budgets for 2023 for various projects that are listed, such as the airfield improvements, the Aviation Administration Center, and also the cargo facility.
I'll move to approve. Second by Amos, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, items favorable. Item number 14, 2301053, in ordinance by Councilmember Dustin Hillis prohibiting parking on the industrial side of Forest Street Northwest to create a residential permit parking program on the north side of Forest Street Northwest pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 150 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances titled Traffic and Vehicles Article IV titled Stopping Standing and Parking, Division IV title Residential Permit Parking, and to waive certain requirements of the City Code of Sections 150-48 and 150-49 and for other purposes, and their sponsor requests that this item be filed.
Motion to file, second by Juan, please open the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, item is filed. This takes us to section in resolutions, item number 15, 23R3003, a resolution by Councilmember Mary Norwood requesting the mayor is designated to make the intersection of Deering Road Northwest and Haskell Road Northwest and Always Stop Control Intersection to request the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install an Always Stop at the intersection of Deering Road Northwest and Haskell Road Northwest and for other purposes, and the sponsor requests this item to be held.
That's correct. I make a motion to hold.
Second. Motion to hold by Norwood, second by Juan, please open the vote on the motion to hold.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, item is held in committee. Mr. Chair, if there is no objection from the committee, can we take items number 16, 21, 22, and 24 together as a block? These are for the installation of traffic calming devices.
Please do.
Item number 16, 23R3086, a resolution by Councilmember Dustin Hillis requesting the mayor is designated to install traffic calming devices on North Grand Avenue Northwest between Donnelly-Holloway Parkway Northwest and Holloway Road Northwest and for other purposes. Item number 21, 23R3091, a resolution by Councilmembers Antonio Lewis and Keisha Shawn Waits requesting the mayor is designated to install traffic calming devices on Bird Street Southwest between Murphy Avenue Southwest to Langston Avenue Southwest and for other purposes. Item number 22, 23R3092, a resolution by Councilmembers Antonio Lewis and Keisha Shawn Waits requesting the mayor is designated to install traffic calming devices on Melrose Drive Southwest between Sylvan Road Southwest and Dekner Avenue Southwest and for other purposes. Item number 24, 23R3097, a resolution by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari requesting the mayor is designated to install traffic calming devices on Faith Avenue Southeast between Stowell Street Southeast and Moreland Avenue Southeast and for other purposes.
Motion to approve by Juan, second by Faroki. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, items are favorable. Mr. Chair, there is no objection from the committee. Can we take items number 17, 18, and 19 together as a block?
No objection.
These are for the installation of always stops. Item number 17, 23R3087, a resolution by Councilmember Mary Norwood requesting the mayor or his designated to make the northern intersection of Castle Gate Drive Northwest and Hayden Hall Road Northwest and Always Stop Control Intersection to request the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install stop signs at the intersection and for other purposes. Item number 18, 23R3088, a resolution by Councilmember Mary Norwood requesting the mayor is designated to make the intersection of Dunbarton Road Northwest and Haddon Road Northwest and Always Stop Control Intersection to request the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install stop signs at the intersection and for other purposes. Item number 19, 23R3089, a resolution by Councilmember Mary Norwood requesting the mayor or his designated to make the western intersection of Peachtree Battle Avenue Northwest and Peachtree Battle Circle Northwest and Always Stop Control Intersection to request the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install stop signs at the intersection and for other purposes.
Motion to approve by Juan.
Second by Norwood.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, these items are favorable. Mr. Chair, for item number 20, it will need to be amended to add minor languages in the caption and the first therefore be resolved clause.
Please do. Motion by Juan. Did I miss something?
We need a second or...
A motion to amend by Juan, second by Faroki.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, item has been amended. Item number 20, 23R3090, a resolution by Councilmembers Howard Shook and Alex Wan, a resolution authorizing the mayor is designated to apply and accept a fiscal year 2023 U.S. Department of Transportation Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity discretionary grant in the amount not to exceed $25,000.0 for the construction of the Atlanta Beltline Northeast Trail and for other purposes.
Motion to approve is amended by Juan, second by Faroki. Please open the vote. If the Beltline would like to speak to this, they can.
We just want to say thank you for your continued partnership as we apply for these grants. We've been successful in receiving these for construction of the West Side Trail, the South Side Trail, and we hope to be successful for the Northeast Trail. Thank you.
Thank you.
The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, item is favorable as amended. This takes us to item number 23. This item will need to be amended because it maintains the caption. It replaces Sylvan Road Southwest and replaces it with to the city limits in the caption and all references in the legislation.
Great. Move to amend as stated, second by Juan, please open the vote on the motion to amend.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, this item has been amended. Item number 23, 23R3093, a resolution by Councilmembers Antonio Lewis and Keisha Shawn Waits as amended by Transportation Committee, a resolution requesting the mayor is designated to install traffic calming devices on Peg Road Southwest between Ferguson Road Southwest to the city limits and for other purposes.
Motion to approve is amended by Juan, second by Faroki. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable as amended. This takes us to item number 25, 23R3141, a resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an agreement for IFBC 1220228 Traffic Signal and Communication Project Traffic Combo Number One with Brooks, Berry, Haney, and Associates Incorporated on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for a term of one year with two one-year renewal options in the amount not to exceed $4,169,615,30. All conscious of what we charge to and pay from the fund department organization account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Mr. Abbasoud.
Ibrahim Abbasoud, interim deputy commissioner, Atlanta DOT Capital Project. The scope of this work is including traffic signal upgrades, ADA ramps, and installation of new signage and marking. It includes about 14 intersections. They are all in Council District 1 and 12.
Mr. Juan.
Yeah, I'm looking at the IPR, I noticed that we only have one bidder for this. It seems like a pretty, is there something unique about this procurement that we wouldn't have had multiple bidders? It seems pretty generic in terms of the scope.
I have the project manager here with me, so he'll give you the exact details.
Thank you. And then the other question on top of that, too. Go ahead and get the microphone is just, the dollar amount, the award amount, is it within budget even with just the one bidder?
Good morning, Josep Aganotero. I'm a project manager for ATL DOT Capital Project. There's nothing special on this project, just only that we received one bid for this one. We tried to beat this project before and we didn't receive bids, so it's looked like we've seen lately in some of the signal-specific projects, we are not getting much bidders. The contractors are competing among themselves, bidding on GDOT project on other municipalities. So we have been asking contractors why not bidding. Most of the answer have been that they are having too many projects. That's good on one side because the economy, but on the other side could be, you know, difficult because we don't have that many contractors and they are basically bidding on many projects at the same time.
So was the dollar amount within the original budget, we thought?
The dollar amount on the original budget was about 3.4. The actual bid came on 4.1, mostly around 18%. When we discussed with senior management, most of the items that were higher from the cost estimate, it's looked like because of material costs and inflation.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I raise this flag because we're going to have a lot of this type of work with our moving Atlanta forward and renew projects. I hope this isn't a harbinger of additional headwinds, so.
Good afternoon. Just to that point, I do want to share with you, and I'll be sending pictures out later. We had our vendor expo yesterday. We had 125 people show up. So we had the opportunity to share with them all the process improvements, all the changes that have been made, and all the opportunities that are in the pipeline. So we're being very proactive because we have the same concern.
Yeah, we're going to need to be. So thank you for your effort. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Juan, second by Faroki. Please open the vote.
Oh, sorry.
Oh. You're welcome to say something.
Jadeep Majunda, Chief Procurement Officer for City of Atlanta. The only thing I want to add is, you know, this is a situation where we went out for bid, we didn't get any bids, then this time we got one bid. But we also looking at, exploring the opportunity of going out with a bid now that we had the vendor expo. We have more suppliers that are now engaged, and maybe there is an opportunity for us to go out and do a bid to get the best competitive bid within the dollar amount specified.
Thank you.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. Item number 26, 23R3142, a resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into a non-exclusive water art installation revocable maintenance agreement with the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority, MARTA, for the purpose of installing and maintenance of the Dreamcasters water art installation for a term of 60 months from the execution of the agreement authorized by this legislation and for other purposes.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Good afternoon, council members. My name's Robert Witherspoon with the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs. The City of Atlanta is installing the Dreamcaster Water Feature as part of the MLK Drive Public Art Enhancements, locations near the corner of Linkwood Avenue and MLK Crossing near the Peyton Forest neighborhood. This resolution will allow the city to enter into a maintenance agreement with MARTA that allows us to follow up on our commitment to provide both art conservation and fountain maintenance to the new water feature. The anticipated completion of the water feature is in March.
I will move to approve. Second by Juan, please open the vote on item 26.
The vote is open. Vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. And Mr. Chair, that concludes our legislative items for today.
All right. Thank you to the committee for your work today, and to members of the public and the administration for being here. This meeting is adjourned.